This is the Harwich Planning Board, Tuesday, December 2nd at 6:30 PM. I have to ask if anyone intends to record the meeting, you must notify the Chair, who will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. Anyone want to record the meeting? We also have a sign-in sheet at the back table if anyone wants to do that. I am just standing in, I am not the Chairman, I am just a whisperer of the stand-in for a Chairman, so bear with me, and anyone on the committee, please correct me at any time. So, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and just as one.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. We are one member short of a quorum. We believe one member is going to try to be here by 7 o'clock. We will get through the material that we are allowed to get through, which is, we're going to kind of go backwards on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
So, bear with us. We can't vote on anything unless there are five members present, but we can open the meeting.
We can open the meeting with four members and we can do the approval required, project 36. PB 2025-36, 5 Brooks Road and 7 Doones Road. Teresa A. Nolan, trustee, and Patricia M. Brodigan, trustee, through their agent Dan Crotow? Crotow? Crotow. My apologies. Moran Engineering, seeking an approval not required, A&R Plan entitled "Plan of Land in Harwich Mass Prepared for Brenda Realty Trust and Charles Realty Trust." Plan by Moran Engineering Associates, dated 11/12/2025, by Jay Thaddeus Eldridge. To move the common property lot line, Lot 3 and Lot 4, Assessors Map Parcel 5-X1-2-0 and 5-X1-0, the project is located in the residential low-density RL zoning district.
Good evening. I'm Thad Eldridge. I worked with Dan Crotow on this, and there was a garage that was on the plan before, and it was asked that that be removed, and it was. There are three questions. I just have a plan swap. I'd say right in the law line, but I put more agents in it, which is pretty jagged to begin with.
Okay. So, before you is a approval not required, where the family, if you'll recall, Dan Crotow was here several months ago, and he came before the Planning Board, and as part of the approval not required. It's really a matter of just literally moving the property line over, and the two lots are in complete, meet the minimum criteria for an approval not, for an endorsement of an approval not required. Both lots front on a public and private way with adequate frontage. This will not change the lot area, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, 81p, in section 409 to 11 of the Code of Harwich, I would recommend that the Board endorse the approval not required. If you have any questions, please let me know up on the map. You can see just the lot line as well as in your packets.
Okay. Any comments from the Board? Any comments from the public?
So, a motion to endorse the approval not required needs to be made by a member.
Okay, so we need a motion?
I move that we endorse that approval not required for Plan of Land in Harwich Mass Prepared for Brenda Realty Trust and Charles Realty Trust, dated 11/12/2025.
We need a second?
Second.
Roll call? All right. Emily?
Emily Burdi, aye.
Ann Tucker, aye.
Annie Newman, aye.
Mary Mounsey.
So, it's passed?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll have everyone sign in.
And at 6:36, that's the only business we can get done, or can we do anything else?
Kristine?
I can provide a few updates.
Okay.
With your permission. First, I want to announce that I'm pleased to let the Board know that we have hired a planning assistant for the Planning Department, and he is standing right behind the TV. Matt Hamilton will be our new planning assistant. So, we're very excited to have Matt. Matt will start on Monday. So, I will have Matt do a more formal introduction to the Board at a future meeting, but I did want to make that announcement. So, Matt accepted our offer, and we're very, very excited to have him. Secondly, we are, the local planning committee is making the rounds to garner support in preparation for annual town meeting. I have reached out to all Boards and Departments to ask for letters of support for, in preparation for annual town meeting, and so, we, I did, I have asked Administration to put a placeholder for the local comprehensive plan, and I will provide a schedule for the Planning Board, because the Planning Board will need to hold a public hearing and make a formal, take a formal vote to approve the local comprehensive plan.
We haven't done that?
Correct. So, we can do that prior, as we're approaching annual town meeting. On tomorrow, the hazard mitigate, the final draft Hazard Mitigation Plan will be, there will be a presentation here at 4 o'clock. Members of the public are welcome to attend. The planning team, which is made up largely of Town Department Heads, in addition to other members of the public, have spent a year and a half on this document. We've worked with the Cape Cod Commission, who have done a tremendous job on putting the plan together. It's available up on the Town website, and we have a public comment period that's open till next Wednesday, December 10th. And I will be going to the Board of Selectmen on Monday to ask for their approval to submit the final draft Hazard Mitigation Plan to FEMA and MIMA. And this is a critical planning document, and it's a very exciting time for the Planning Department to be finalizing several of these plans that the members of the public and stakeholders of the committees have been working tirelessly on. So, it's nice to see them come to a completion. Yesterday, the Zoning Board of Appeals did approve the Pine Oaks Village 4 comprehensive permit. We are, we spent over four hours at a public meeting yesterday, and Town Council and staff will be preparing to write the written decision, and I just wanted to keep you informed of that. Next Tuesday, December, or not next Tuesday, but December 16th, the Cape Cod Commission will be evaluating the Witchmere redevelopment project at 5 o'clock at the Community Center in the multipurpose room. So, all members of the public are invited to attend that meeting as well. And the next Planning Board meeting is on December 9th, at the 204 Cultural Arts Municipal Building. I don't think I'll ever, ever get the name of that building correct.
Nobody does.
Yes. So, that's going to be at the library, and we will be making an update to just the meeting location this week.
So, the meeting's at the library at the 204?
Correct.
At 6:30?
And that's on the second floor. And again, all members of the public are invited to attend, are invited and encouraged to attend. And I think that wraps up my staff updates.
Okay. I think we do. Close the meeting?
We can recess the meeting.
Yeah, recess.
Until 10 o'clock, until 7:00.
10:00.
Sorry.
Okay, just to the public. We just cannot do any business without a fifth member who has indicated.
Not yet.
Who has indicated they would be here at 7:00 PM, so we have 20 minutes to get to know each other, and the local, the local comprehensive plan people just had a cookie swap. I'm happy to share my cookies if that will help get through the 20 minutes. I have no pride, so that's where we are. So, we're recessed until 7:00.
7:00.
7:00 PM. We'll give you an update if anything has happened with that one member who's on her way. And again, cookies?
Can't get mad at anybody that offers you cookies.
I'm tired. Take your cookies. Be nice to the local comprehensive plan people, because they provided the cookies, so thank you. All right, we're going to reopen our meeting. We now have a quorum.
Thank you, Mary.
And Kristine, what do you want to start with?
We can start in, with PB 2533.
Okay. Want me to read it in?
Sure.
All right. PB 2025-33, William J. Glover, the third owner, authorizes Jay Thaddeus Eldridge, East Southeast LLC, seek special permit for multifamily special permit and site plan review, special permit with waivers. The proposed project is to modify a pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure, structure to have a full second floor and construct a similar new structure to be connected and include a storage garage. The building will include four one-bedroom apartments with decks, six parking spaces, and second curb cut. Application is pursuant to the Code of Harwich, Sections 325-51Q, 325-51, and 325-55, and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11. The property is located at 33 Old Colony Road, Assessors Map 41, Parcel C4-A-O, and is 14,450 square feet of upland. The parcel is located in Commercial Village Zoning District. Welcome, Mr. Eldridge.
Thank you much. For the record, Thad Eldridge, East Southeast. We've been working on this plan for some time now, in the attempt to work with the obituaries to appease concerns. If it were drier and lighter out, I'd say we could take a site visit right to it, because it's right there, just off the parking lot. There was a law firm there for a number of years, and now we'd like to change that into a multifamily pursuant to the sections that were quoted. The idea is to take the existing dwelling, take off the roof, put a second floor on it, and then put a very similar dwelling on the property and interconnect those two with storage, which is always needed for small apartments. These are rather small apartments. There will be basement storage, that certainly helps. The second curb cut is to make maneuverability work for the outgoing traffic for the four parking spaces to the east, and two parking spaces to the west. They'll back around and then use the main entrance. We had reports from VHB that came in yesterday, and then the Town Planner that came in today. There are a number of revisions that we are looking at, better detail on the vegetated buffer. We've left the question of the fence up to the neighbors, and we've had mixed comments back, happy to put up a fence, happy to not put up a fence, whatever works best for them. There's a lighting detail that we can add, and also a soil erosion and sediment control plan. Additionally, we have questions regarding the handicap accessibility, and that will be reviewed with the Building Commissioner before our next meeting. Prior to that, we have a proposed four-bedroom septic system. We have a stormwater system that goes beyond the 25-year design criteria, and it goes to a 100-year storm event. There is minimal grading that has to be done, certainly no fill that needs to be brought in, and it should hopefully be a decent little project. I know that the Planner would like this to be restricted to year-round rentals, and the applicant is very willing to have that as part of the approval and enter a deed restriction if necessary. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions from the Board first?
Can we have a staff report first?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The case number is PB 2025-33. This is for a multifamily special permit, site plan review special permit, as well as the Harwich Center Overlay District special permit, and the conversion of an existing commercial office space and into a multifamily building with four residential units. The lot, this is a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming lot, and the lot area is 14,450 square feet with an existing building footprint of 860 square feet, and the frontage is also non-conforming. It's 129.44 feet shy of the 150 feet of frontage that's normally required. But again, this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot that was lawfully created at the time. The proposed project is located at 33 Old Colony Road. The project location is surrounded by Town Hall offices, commercial and mixed-use developments, as well as residential homes, the bike trail and public parks, public park and recreation area. The project, again, is to convert an existing 860-square-foot commercial building into a multifamily building with, by adding a full second floor to the existing structure, as well as building, a connected building to the existing building in addition to a storage garage. The apartments are intended for year-round workforce housing, and the applicant has also just committed to restricting, or agreeing to restrict those units for year-round rental, which I think is a positive benefit to the community and does meet the spirit and intent of the multifamily purpose and intent bylaw that was adopted in 2020. The proposed building will be approximately 5,381 square feet with six proposed parking spaces and two curb cuts from Old County Road. The project does meet all of the required building and site coverage. The applicant did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and was granted zoning relief for rare setbacks. However, the Harwich Center Overlay District allows setbacks to be 10 feet, so the Zoning Board of Appeals process probably was not necessary. But however, they still had the zoning relief that they needed, so they do meet the zoning setbacks for the project. The applicable laws are Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11, the Harwich zoning codes for Sections 325-51, 0, Harwich Center Overlay District, Sections 325-51Q, multifamily special permit, and Sections 325-55, site plan review special permit. And the applicant has asked for a waiver. The property is located at, again, 330 Old Colony Road, Assessors Map ID 41C480R. The lot, again, is in the Commercial Village Zoning District, as well as the Harwich Center Overlay District. Comments from Town Boards will be forthcoming due to the holiday season. I'm still waiting for some input from other Town Departments. VHB also did provide input from Stormwater Management, and the applicant is, has responded to those comments, and I have submitted, I will be forwarding that information to the Town's Consulting Engineer for further review. And so, for the project, some of the zoning requirements, again, they've met, the site coverage, building coverage, height requirements of the multifamily bylaw. The road egress and access will include two egresses as part of the site plan, so, sorry. Okay, so here we are, and if you can see the green dot right here at the top, that's where the site is. You can see Main Street and Old Colony Road to the north. So, where the green dot is, is the property in question. Next to it is the parking lot for Town Hall, and you can see the additional commercial properties along Main Street, as well as Brooks Park to the east of the property. So again, a closer look of the property in sight.
I can just, would you mind just?
I'll just call it up.
Thank you.
Matt's going to help me with the, just running quickly through the photo, through the slideshow. So this is a closer look of the property and Town Hall parking lot to the west. Next slide. This is the existing conditions as the site looks, exists currently. And next slide. So, the site plan, it's a little hard to tell, but there are two curb cuts off of Old Colony Road. There is a dumpster to the west side of the property. Screening is also highlighted on the site plan. There is a question of, to have additional screening along the Westerly Line, and there is a question of whether or not the fence will be added to the site plan or not to the site plan, so that will be up to the applicant. VHB did recommend a site distance evaluation just to conform for safe access in and out of the driveway, and the applicant has agreed to provide that information. The parking layout, this, the existing site has two to three parking spaces. The applicant is proposing six parking spaces as required by Town zoning. Relative to traffic, the project is in the Commercial Village Zoning District. The conversion of a commercial office space to four residential departments. Staff is not recommending a traffic study. It's not anticipated that the proposed project would have a significant impact on traffic or pedestrian safety. The site plan also includes utilities, town water and gas hookup, and again, the stormwater management and drainage plan has been evaluated by the Town's Consulting Engineer, VHB. For landscaping and screening, the landscaping is included in the site plan, but the applicant will provide more information relative to a list of plants and vegetation, and we'll also update the landscaping plan on the site plan. So, the applicant has provided architectural renderings and floor plans. Matt, if you want to queue those up as well. This is just the front elevation, the front view, and if you can just go through those just to give an idea of the proposed project. Next slide. Next. And this is the, these are the floor plans for the four apartments. These will be one-bedroom apartments. They do comply with the 120-square-foot requirement under the multifamily bylaw for 120, 120 square feet for the bedroom. Next slide. And next slide. And these are the architectural renderings for the proposed site. Next slide. Next. And next. And I think that concludes their presentation. I did provide information relative to the applicable laws that the Planning Board needs to consider during its review. And if there are any questions, please, I'm happy to answer anything.
Just one question. Is this property outside the historic district? Because this building's definitely in it, and I don't.
It's outside the historic district. I did confer with the zoning compliance officer, and I should have added that to the slideshow.
Because I know Brooks Park is in it. We had to vote on some of their pavilions and stuff, or historic, so I'm surprised it's not.
Historic is out, but I can get the map for you when we go to public comment.
And it doesn't seem like we're ready to, that we have all the information that we would need to decide this tonight anyway.
Yep.
So, I'm happy to follow up on that myself later on. And I guess my only other question is, the only waiver you're looking for is the waiver for parking screening?
It's going to be, under the bylaw, you're supposed to have 15 feet from the sideline of a road for tall shrubbery. We would like to waive that, because the road layout is 82 and 1/2 feet wide. The pavement is so far from the site, we want larger trees right up to the street line.
That's all I have for right now.
Anyone? Mary?
The application says the apartments are intended for year-round workforce housing, specifically for members of the Fire and Police Departments. Is there any kind of agreement in place with either Fire or Police that, are they aware of the fact that these are intended for their employees?
So, now he's Mr. Glover, but he was Officer Glover for a number of years. He's just retired from the police force, and when he purchased this property, he wanted to do something to give back to the departments. Sorry to do this to the Harwich policeman, but he.
So, there's no agreement or?
No.
Letter of intent or?
When he's ready to move forward to rent this, he wants to put a flyer up on the Police Politin Board and Fire Department Politin Board.
Good intention, I just wondered if there was something more formal between the owner and the apartments. That's it for me.
Is the downstairs unit handicap acceptable?
We're looking into the requirement at the moment.
And then the access to the second floor, is this outside staircase, is that correct?
Yes, for both second-floor units.
For both second-floor units, okay. Anyone else open to the public for some comments? Anyone want to speak? You just have to have signed in. Please come to the podium, give your name and address, and. Please come to the podium, give your name and address, and go over there.
Good evening. My name is Robert Ruddock. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our views about the application for the special permits that you have before you this evening. My wife Jane and I have owned our home at 16 Oak Street, right over there, since May of 1975, 50 years now. We've raised our daughter in large part here, and our granddaughter now spends her entire summer with us. The project directly abuts our home, but in many ways, its impact is outsized from simply, outsized from simply being in a butter. This is not a situation where this is a single-family home with one driveway and perhaps a lamppost. This is a four-unit, six-parking-space project, which, the parking lot is nearly the entire front yard, and it is directly across from a well-used pipe path. Our concerns are generally four: visual impact, lighting pollution, short-term rental and occupancy, which I'll get to in a moment after the comment earlier, and the location of the second driveway. In written comments that I'm gonna distribute to you in a moment, I go into some detail about all of those. But let me cut, if you will, to the chase. We would like to make a formal request of the planning board to act within its authority to impose reasonable conditions to avoid impacts on the character and quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood, and where necessary to make those conditions run with the land. Taking the long-term rental off the list for a moment, our concern is to impose conditions on the lighting in both the front and back of the building, including the parking lot, to minimize upward and side light pollution as well as duration of the lighting. Second, to impose conditions with the vegetation barrier, which we support, but to make sure that it is of a size that immediately will be a barrier to the visual impact of such a large building. And fourth, to impose a condition that no driveway can be within 10 feet of a neighbor's property because the second driveway is virtually in their backyard at this point. In regard to long-term rental, we applaud the applicant's statement a moment ago to agree to have conditions for long-term rental on the property. We would suggest that those conditions run with the land so that future owners would not escape what is a very, very good provision for Harwich and for multifamily development. Finally, we're not opposed to the project, the goal of creating multifamily, long-term housing for residents of Harwich. As we all know, housing is critical for us. We thank Mr. Glover and his engineer, Mr. Eldridge, for providing materials and responding to our questions as we've come to understand the project and their goals. The building design is particularly good, in our view. The question is not, should the project be built? It is how to build it and avoid unnecessary impacts on our homes and our single-family neighborhood. The conditions requested above, perhaps inarticulately stated, provide a welcoming path for us, my wife and I, and in our neighborhood for the project. So let me distribute to you my written comments.
There we go. That's...
It's okay.
Let me throw it at you. Thank you so much.
Happy to take any questions. Yeah. As far as I know, by the way, the historic district ends at my property line.
That was what I was trying to clarify, if I may, through you, actually, to the applicant. Were you planning on providing us on the lighting plan?
Yes.
Okay, so I would assume that's why the folks get to look into. As far as trash pickup, are you, is your client intending to have a commercial pickup? Or are they gonna, is the expectation that the property would be...
No, he's gonna have a trash service pickup.
So I think a reasonable position that I think we've done in the past would be to make sure that that's no earlier than, than a certain hour, no later than a certain hour, just to prevent neighbors from enjoying their property. Did I refer the issue with the driveway issue correct?
Driveway.
Where the curb cut was for the driveway?
Yes, that was one of our concerns. Actually, the neighbors whose property is particularly impacted is here, and the app is discuss that with you.
So I think for another meeting, if there's a possibility for people to just look into that issue and see if that's...
That one we know is difficult. There's a utility pole and a fire hydrant.
Right there.
To move the driveway any further west.
Do you have time to follow up on it? We'll know one way or another. Maybe just make comments on this.
Lighting, I think I heard you say timers, which we've done before. Is that?
Yes, yes.
You're looking for?
The lighting is a particular issue for me. We have a considerable amount of lighting across the street from our house. We have considerable lighting in back of our house when the parking lot was expanded with the addition of this, of this portion of the building. So I'm particularly sensitive to that. And I think there are ways to downward light as well as to barrier the light so it's diffusion does not, doesn't run all over the, everybody's property, to be honest with you.
I believe there's another property that we've done a timer on and almost at the parking lot, like almost kicklights, the lowlights?
Yes.
Is that something?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Would that be?
Yes.
Okay. So lighting, driveway, anyone else?
Can you go through this? The size of the vegetation, I think a number of us believe that vegetation is the way to go rather than a stockade fence, but it has to be of a certain size. We don't wanna have to wait 20 years before it actually does what it's supposed to do. So I thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Anyone?
Just wanted to follow up with the size of the vegetation. Sometimes based on where, how close it is to the, to the sidelines is the only other impact on that vegetation, depending on where we're talking about the where it is. So I think our engineer, personally you mentioned, our engineer wanted the police department to do a site inspection on the curb cuts. Did I miss something?
I think the fire department, they wanted to make sure that there was adequate turning radius and accessibility.
So that's probably another issue with vegetation.
Yes.
With vegetation as well.
Not to exceed my own time, one of the other issues, of course, would be to maintain as much vegetation and trees as possible on the site.
Existing trees, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public who wants to comment? Please come up and state your name and...
Hi, my name is Molly Bench, Mary Catherine, for the record, or officially. I'm the director-butter with my husband Evan Sullivan at 22 Oak. And I guess I can answer a quick question because we went in front of the historic commission, that 33 Old Colony comes behind 22 Oak and is, was, the Kahoon family that originally owned the property, when they sold the house, they kept the back, he basically slid off the back, I think in the 70s, 71, 72, and built his office there. And because that, so, and then the town filed, I think in the late 70s, and then did a refresh in the 90s. So I think because that sliver wasn't part of any sort of plan in 1975 when they first did the first round, it wasn't part of the historic district. But it's an aberration of the map, so it literally looks like someone cut it out. But that gets to character context. I guess my first priority is one, thank Mr. Eldridge and the developer took a lot of time with us, which I appreciate. My concern is not having a multifamily home behind us. I am for that with the design, you know, if it maintains the architecture consistent with the community. My concern is that any decisions not codified, per my neighbor Bob's comments, as far as deed restriction for year-round housing, or no short-term rentals, deed restriction for town employees, things like that, if, even something as basic as, you know, trash pickup. The developer has sold multiple properties over the last decade. There is zero guarantee that the developer would hold this one. And nothing would leave me believe he would do so, based on his prior record, if you go through his property flipping. So if this property is to get all these permits to allow for workforce housing in the town, or even senior housing, or something that the town does desperately need, that it is codified into the deeds and documents of 33 Colony, Old Colony Road to preserve those goals. Because anything not codified is a waste of everyone's time to even talk about. And so we know we need this housing for all sorts of types of people in the town that wanna live here, but without codifying it, it's not benefiting the community that I think we'd be voting to benefit. So that would be my, any, any permit, waiver, special exemption, anything should be on the grounds of, if this was sold tomorrow, you know, so the developer had a lot of talk with us about, oh, well, he'll be property managing this and that, and then he mentioned, oh, it'll be in Florida and this and that. So if, we can't assume anything that the current developer could maintain. So what does that mean? I don't know. I know a lot of the 48 exemptions being, okay, noise, odor, et cetera, as we talk about trash pickup, Airbnb parties, et cetera. What do we need to do to codify that? And so that is where, I guess, the largest priority, and then I second everything Bob said around trees, light, basic maintenance of the environment as much as poss, of the, you know, physical environment, trees as much as possible.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Evan Sullivan, 22 Oak Street, director-butter to the plan. I am in favor of the workforce development housing, both myself and my wife. Our first home was in a low-income housing situation in Boston, so we benefit, we don't object to that. My objections to this plan are that it is, as I think I said this before, too much house for too little land. I understand it meets within the parameters of the, of the town zoning and restrictions, but a few that they're asking for waivers on, but the site as planned seems excessive, with particular attention to the parking and the tree layout between my property and the other property. Currently, there's a well-mature age of greenery, and as the existing plan is, virtually every one of those trees will be cut down, except for a couple. The existing parking lot comes within 10 feet of the property line, of the designated parking space, comes within 10 feet of the parking line, to allow the two egresses. I would advocate for a single egress parking situation, or a redesigned parking situation, even if it was a requirement to replace a telephone pole or replace a hydrant. I don't know what historically has been imposed upon developers in the past, but I think that would mitigate the need to remove a lot of the trees and vegetation between the properties. In addition, I agree with the other comments that were made about things need to be set in stone for future owners of the site because, as stated by Molly, there's no, I've heard a lot of, we have an intention of doing this, we have an intention of doing this. I've heard that a lot, and we, and there's nothing concrete that's been in place about what actually will be done. That's it, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
And just a comment. Somewhere in here, I saw that the ZBA allowed for a waiver on the setback.
Correct.
Is that what the gentleman was just talking about, that, on that edge of the property? Was that the setback that has been allowed by Board of Appeals?
And may I?
Yeah.
The, and I expressed this to the zoning board when we went for that variance. It's against the town property, that's the wooded area back here that's full of ivy. If it had been a nonconformity to a residential structure, we would not have gone for it. We would have found a way to reduce that. But because it's against town property that's open, we felt it was reasonable to go for the variance. But that's to the southerly lot line where the existing house is, or the existing structure is too close to the lot line.
So that isn't the, those are two different things. The comment about it being too close to the property line is not in the area that the zoning Board of Appeals allowed?
The previous speaker was referring to the parking, which is located 10 feet off of the common lot line, which is the minimum required setback.
So that issue has not been litigated by the zoning Board of Appeals?
No.
No, we're conforming with that proposal.
They meet it. They meet the requirement for parking.
For the parking space.
For the parking spaces.
Okay.
From the street.
The building has to be further, but the parking is 10 feet, 20 feet off of the street itself. And just to reiterate, the waiver that we're seeking is for additional trees closer to the road to that a butter to enhance that buffer.
On the next round, can you make clear where the parking spaces are? I was just looking at that, and then we can probably get that clearer. So this is something we can't act on tonight. Any other comments? My recommendation would be to continue the public hearing till January 13th or the next meeting day.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, Barbara Nickerson, Route 28 Harwich Port. Not in my neighborhood for change. So question, why, if the town and everybody, we're putting local planning committee, planning board, everybody's worried about housing, which is genuine issue, why not look at putting the second egress into the town parking lot that's hardly ever full, and keeping it away from the single-family homes and some of the issues there? Just, just a thought. I mean, you got a parking lot right there, can we reconfigure it? Or who do you need to talk to in the town to see if something like that could work? Just, just a thought. Thank you.
Pascal?
No.
That took a lot of consideration.
The reason for the second egress, everybody comes in, there are two spaces here, they can back around and come out. These four parking spaces are angled parking spaces, and people will back up and then head out.
I don't think it, we can see it, nobody else can.
Can we put it up on the board?
Sure. Yeah.
Matt, would you mind uploading that again?
And then can I speak up there?
Yeah.
How it be the side frame?
Yep, next, right there. Can you make it bigger? Yeah. Are they two on this side and four on that?
Four on this.
And so that's not town property. Town property's down here, correct?
For the town property, then, all of that, maybe, we're on the wrong side.
We're on the wrong side.
Can I just, will I stick the picture up? Can I speak about the picture?
Sure.
The vegetation that I was speaking... The vegetation that I was speaking about before?
Yeah.
This is the existing, this is the existing structure. This is the proposed structure. There's significant vegetation, probably right here, which will all be decimated. There's almost no vegetation here, but that's a property, still some, but it is existing vegetation, all right.
And that's the vegetation you're speaking of, with the mature trees, correct?
Yes, mature trees and undergrowth. They will all, virtually all be cut out. Save it for the one or two trees that are in this portion.
I think that's the septic system.
This is, this is one curb cut here, and the gentleman's gentleman should point out the second curb cut's over here, and there are one or two trees that would be in the center there.
There's a massive oak tree within the road layout.
Is that massive oak tree going to be taken down?
No.
Okay. Questions? Is that area that was just spoken to, is that the septic, correct, right there?
The septic and parking.
And parking. Okay, so that's the loss of vegetative area.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess my question is, will we have sufficient updates by January 13th, considering it's only summer 2nd, but we've got the holidays coming up?
We'll have the updates before Christmas.
Okay.
And I'll work with VHB to make sure that they have adequate response, adequate time to evaluate any new updates as well.
And I would make a motion that we continue this public hearing on, number are we? PB 2025-20, eh, -33, to January 13th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second. Okay. Vote. Emily?
Roca.
Roca, please.
Emily, who do I?
We don't know, we're all here, all right.
Yeah, we're just arriving. Okay. So do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you on the 13th.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for the cookie.
I can't guarantee there will be one on January 13th. Okay.
Good to see you. Thank you. I met you, you're a key, back on my board.
Okay.
Which is now beautiful, I might add.
Glad to see it.
You haven't touched anything else. You haven't moved anything. You actually destroyed. You were, you were.
Great. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, moving on? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. PB 2025-34, Dennis Miller, owner, applicant, Main Street HP LLC, seeks a modification to an approved site plan review special permit and mixed-use special permit, PB 2022-15 decision. The proposal is to modify and extend hours of operation for one of the commercial, for one of the businesses. The project is in the Commercial Village Zoning District and Village Commercial Overlay District. The request is pursuant to the Code of Harwich 325-51 and 325-55, and Master under law, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11. The subject property is 575 Route 28, assessors map 14, parcel D 15. What we've got, so.
So Dennis was going to appear virtually? I don't know.
I don't.
He was going to call in to participate and just provide an update, but we don't have him. Doesn't appear as the, appear some? Can? Dennis, if you're, Dennis Miller, if you're there, if you wouldn't mind speaking?
I can give you the basics, bringing it, bringing it all back to cookies.
Bringing it all back to cookies.
This is about ice cream cookie sandwiches. I'm Chad Marby, of the potential Charlie's Ice Cream Cookie Sandwiches.
Oh.
And we're really just looking to lift the hourly restriction on this particular unit in Dennis' building at 575 Harwich Port. The original restriction was, I believe, put in as, he originally planned for this particular unit to be a breakfast, lunch, like, to-go place. It didn't work out, as the restaurant that's already next to this unit decreased in size, created a small, this unit's about 20 by 40. It's a small, little unit, where we intended just to gourmet ice cream cookie sandwiches. Fresh baked cookies that you'll smell from the street, creamy ice cream, kind of a grab-and-go concept. He felt that maybe one of the keys to the restriction was parking, which we don't see to be an issue, as we're catering to people already in Harwich Port, the foot traffic in Harwich Port. We see the potential void, where we may be losing an ice cream store just up the street from there, and with all the houses nearby and the businesses, it'll be virtually 100% foot traffic. We don't see, I mean, it's obviously hyper-seasonal as well, it's not a year-round thing.
Not a year-round business.
Certainly not. I would say ballparking Memorial Day to Columbus Day, kind of affair. Maybe opening on holiday weekends, you know, you think your Christmas to New Year's kind of thing, maybe Valentine's Day, but when people want cookies and ice cream sandwiches, kind of thing. We're not looking for a liquor license, we're not looking for an entertainment license, we're not looking to be a late-night business, we just want to be open past 4:00 PM, as that's when people eat ice cream.
Okay. So to what times do you want to be open?
I think, whatever the standard is in town, if it's 9 o'clock, if it's 10 o'clock, I think 9 o'clock would be more than fair. It doesn't, certainly not a midnight affair, or, you know, nothing late. It's for families, it's for kids to come and have delicious ice cream on homemade cookies.
Okay. Thank you. All right, can you give us your staff report?
Sure. In your packet is my, just a one-page summary of the modification request. As you know, this was part of PB 2022-15, as part of the conditions of approval. Condition nine required the fast-food takeout restaurant to close no later than 4:00 PM daily, except during weekly Harwich Port music strolls on summer evenings. And I understand some of the history of the project relative to the parking concerns, so I also included in your packet the decision from 2022, as well as the consultant's review at the time, that did a summary of a lot of the parking, and some of the reasoning of the board's decision, so I thought it was good background information for the board members to have. Also in your packet are letters from the property owner, Dennis Miller, regarding the request, and additional information relative to parking that he does provide within the village of Harwich Port. And so, so the only comment that I would make, the applicant is requesting for the extension of hours of operation. It's for one of the 850 square feet build units, and my understanding for hours of operation for businesses are generally regulated through the select board's office for, when applicants or business owners apply for common victual, victual, victueller licenses. I'm going to get that wrong every time, so.
I do, too.
And I understand the planning board had issues, and this project is not up and running at this time, so there is no data to, or any visual observations for staff to evaluate any of the traffic implications, because the building is still under construction.
So I guess that's where I'm coming from on this. I was on the board at the time. We did very specifically limit the timeframe.
Based on?
Because of the retail and the, and the restaurant use, they needed a waiver to be able to, to make it happen. And what was represented, if I recall correctly, was that this business, one of the intended businesses was going to generally close at 4 o'clock. So because the waiver, and because of the parking in Harwich Port, we allowed the special permit, knowing that one of the businesses was going to close at 4 o'clock. Because I, you know, while I appreciate the fact that you think you're going to have all foot traffic, I don't necessarily know that that's, that that's true, right? It's.
I think the vast majority would be. I mean, only time would tell, I suppose.
Right, and we don't know what other businesses are still going to go in there. I believe it was originally Mad Minnow was going to go, was going to move from one building to the other. I'm not sure if that's still.
I don't believe that's, I can't speak to that 100%.
No, and I appreciate that, and I wouldn't expect you to.
The way it's going to explain to me is it's too, too retail.
And Mr. Miller might not even know yet who's, you know, who his tenants are going to be. We know how long it took for Cape Roots to move into, into the other building, and for that to get changed. So for me, I guess I would just probably want to know a little bit more on the, on what the requirements, what the parking requirements would be for the businesses that are, that are intending now to go in. I mean, this was based on speculation in 2022. We're now approaching 2026. If he has, knows you're going to be a tenant, knows who his other tenants are going to be, maybe we'd have a better insight to see what the requirements actually would be under, under these current tenants versus, versus what we speculated on at the time. It might help. We know the parking, we know the parking in Harwich Port is tough, either way.
Yes.
So.
And I believe Mr. Miller is on the phone.
He said, he said that he was on the phone, he was trying to keep it away from here.
I can see the little green thing.
He muted right now.
Oh.
Is it?
Did someone bring a Ouija board? Maybe we can give that back.
We could do that. Mary, as an option, we, you know, maybe we can continue this and do a little more research on that.
What's our next meeting after this one?
December 9th, which we are booked, and January 13th is also booked, so we would be this, the 4th. Yeah, we spent, are we January? It's, I believe, January 27th.
27.
Yeah.
Yeah, we spent, we have one, two. So I guess my comment about, from my, my look at continuance is, I don't think it's, I think we'd still be in a position to vote in time for you to deal with the spring season if, if we're talking the end of January. I just, I would feel, knowing how much deliberation went into the parking issue and that waiver, I guess I would feel better knowing, you know, if we have a better idea of what the tendencies are looking like, now that it's almost built and it's almost going to be ready for occupants for the summer.
Right, and Dennis will be able to speak to that a lot more than I can.
No, and I appreciate that. He's probably trying to.
Hopefully, he pops up any second now. I'm sure he's talking to his computer, and it's just not coming through, but it's.
He says he's not muted. But we can call.
Yeah, if you'd like to do, to do that, if you can bring it to the table.
We have three.
My sister and brother-in-law from Murphy's General Store, they can also speak to the potential parking issues, as they have zero parking and do a risk business.
All right, I'm going to put you on spoke speaker, and see if it works with the microphone that's here. Hold on. All right, Dennis, I, let's see if we can hear you. Dennis?
Technology.
I heard it for a second, and then it.
Ain't technology wonderful?
Yeah. Dennis?
I have a question while we're waiting. Was this operating hours restriction imposed on any of the other businesses in that?
No.
Well, sorry, Dennis?
Why is it fair for one and not fair for the others?
We have to do a case, case by case, and we spent, there's three full conditions on parking in this special permit, so.
So we had, we had a number of conditions when the building that Roots, when that was built, and we had, and these were some of the conditions we had with, with this one.
I hear you, I'm going to put you by the microphone. Hold on, here you go. All right, you're near the microphone.
Hi, I'm sorry, can, can anyone hear me?
Yes, Dennis.
Okay, I apologize. I have been on the call from the beginning of the meeting, and I couldn't communicate, so I'll be really brief. Thank you for giving us this opportunity, giving me this opportunity. I, I heard the commentary, and a couple of things. First of all, when this was first approved, the, the permit, we did, in fact, whoever was speaking, and again, I'm on my cell phone, I apologize, I'm traveling, and I couldn't change my schedule, but at the time, I had what was a breakfast business lined up to go into the space, so, to be honest with you, I felt confident at that point to, to go forward. With that in mind, I didn't resist it, I agreed to it, and unfortunately, both the restaurant and the breakfast business, both of them changed course. It's, you recall, 2022 was a tricky time for construction, prices, contractors, business in general. So, anyway, I do have a restaurant, someone was asking about the restaurant, there is a restaurant fully committed. It's actually the, I can say it, because it's, it's not private knowledge anymore. It's the owners of Milano's are, are opening a seafood restaurant, a high-end, higher-end seafood restaurant there, in the, on the, on the restaurant side. And then, I have had five or six people trying to fill that small 800-square-foot space, and I cannot get a business, including the, the businesses in front of you, who will go forward with, with taking that space with that restriction in place. So I've searched for someone who I thought would be a fit for the town, which is something I always do anyway, and would have minimal impact, and certainly not a material impact on parking, and, you know, synergistically was a fit, and, and here's, these people, also the owners of the general store in Harwich Port, are just a tremendous fit to the community, tremendous, tremendous fit to the town, don't require, as I heard said, don't require liquor license, late-night hours, outside music. It's going to be a takeout business, so, you know, to the extent someone does even park there, they're going to park, get their sandwich and go. It's, you know, it's, there's not, and most of the traffic will come from people in the village, who are at the shops, at the restaurants will come over. So anyway, I don't want to belabor that, but the bottom line is, it was a good a fit as we could possibly find, I think, for the village. And I do, you know, I provide, and, and what this lot will do, it'll pull the, the concentrated center in front of the Mad Minnow building, and the hot stove, and the municipal lot, and bring it down further, and spread it out a bit, and create less congestion. As, as I said in my letter to the board, we're taking an empty lot, creating four commercial businesses, five residential units, and 56 parking spots, where there was just a, for the 15 years, and probably for 20 years before that, just an empty lot. So, for all those reasons, and, and many more, because I am supplying parking for many businesses in town who have no parking, and yet are jam-packed every single night during the summer. in town who have no parking and yet are jam-packed every single night during the summer, and those people are parking somewhere. And a lot of them are parking in my lots, at the Mad Minnow, Three Monkeys, this lot and, and others. So I don't know, I just, I know at the time what the intention was and it was good, well-intended on, on all sides, but things have changed since then. And this is the reality we're facing with, and there's 800 square feet. It's the only 800 square feet in town with any type of a, that I'm aware of, with any type of a closing restriction on it. And the irony of it is that I'm the guy who provides more parking than any other person in town. And with this lot, I'll provide as much parking as the entire municipal lot. So I guess I'm just, you know, advocating and passionately asking to allow this business and businesses like this be in the future potentially to be able to use this space and contribute into our community and serve the market and, you know, and, and, and not go elsewhere, quite frankly.
Okay.
So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dennis, Mary.
So I'm still looking that we're talking, it was a reduction from 74 spaces that would have been required, correct? Down to 56. So that was a, that was a waiver of 21 spaces. And those 56, I'm just trying to refresh my memory. The 29 are at the 575, nine are at 571, and 18 are on the 569 property. Is that still the case?
That is correct, right. The 569 property, the 18, has already been redeveloped into the parking lot. And then the rest are part of the site activity that's going on at the 575 lot. And I own all those properties, so, you know, I, I have, and they all have permanent easements that run with the land and, you know, as was required by the town.
So I, I guess my other question would really be more for our engineers on a parking situation is whether a takeout, what, what a takeout would require for parking more than just a restaurant. Because I'm thinking, to me, it sounds like a takeout and, and I understand it's cookies and, and ice cream, but to me, a takeout is going to be more like a Sunday school was and have a heavier traffic because you're coming in for 10 minutes at a time and 15 minutes at a time. So from my perspective, I, I would wonder if it would really require some of the spaces to be time restricted and policed so that, because I suspect, I know how people are. You find a parking space, they're going to stay there if, if it's a, whether it's a stroll night or another night. You find a space, it's not going to be a temporary in and out, even if they're just originally going there for your business. You know, people are going to take the opportunity to, to go to your store and go to other stores. So I mean, I might be, I guess I just kind of want to hear what the, what the VHB might have to say on the, on the...
Parking lot math, really.
Right, the difference between, you know...
Trip generation for a fast food takeout for ice cream.
Versus, versus a straight restaurant. Like obviously, you know, the restaurant, they're going to be there longer, or they should be there longer. And maybe the solution is that a couple of the, the spaces are dedicated as, you know, quick in and outs, you know, the 15 minutes, the 20 minutes. I, I don't know, but I, I, I just think we'd be better off, considering we spent so much time on parking the last time that we looked at this, I just think it might be helpful to look at. And, and I do, and I will say again, you know, I understand the, the want to, to do it and get it over with, but I, I do think it might be helpful. And if we weren't addressing it till the end of January, I do think, I would hope that you would still have time to kind of figure that all, all out and it would be finalized before, before the season started. You know, it's not, it's not June, it's not the week before Memorial Day, thankfully. So like some people do wait that long and it's nice to not have it come in at the last minute, so.
Well, one, one of the challenges, one of the challenges is that, you know, they have to buy ovens and equipment and we have to bring power into the building and vents and, you know, it's, it's a pretty comprehensive, e- even for a small 800 square foot. I just see, you know, I, I see these businesses loading up my parking lots, pizza places, barrooms, you know, retailers all over town, and they don't have, they have zero parking in some cases. And, you know, I, I don't...
I understand that, but again, you know, it was all part of the special permit when it was originally created and I, I, I don't want to do disservice to the original, to the board that made the, the original decision. And I understand your point, I was involved with, with your other building when, when the, you have the whole parking issue with, with the buildings on either side of you. So I, you know, I do understand and appreciate all of that.
Would, would you be open to moving, continuing this to the January 26th and we just take a deep dive in all these decisions that were made in 2022 and conditioned on the special permit? We're talking about January 26th, is that correct?
27.
Is this hearing still open?
Yes.
Then why are we planning for what happens after this hearing?
If we've just requested more information.
I asked for more information. That's, that was my request.
You know, 2021, 2022, that was then. This is now.
Yep.
And we have an opportunity to accommodate a business, another business. I'm sure it's going to be a great business and we shouldn't be making it any more difficult for them to come to our town and do business. You know, I understand the logic behind the restrictions of parking, but, you know, the reality of how Harwich Port is evolving, it's, it's almost like Chatham now. People that go to a business in Chatham don't park just in that business's parking spaces. They park wherever they're able to. And, you know, if your, your parking space that's dedicated to your business is taken up by somebody that's at the place up the street, when your customer comes, they have to find someplace else. That's just the reality of, of where we live now. And so...
It's not that, just not to interrupt you, but we, I was on the board when this was done. We spent quite a bit of time. I think just one more shot at why we did it is very reasonable. Yes, Harwich Port has changed and Dennis owns a great deal of Harwich Port. We're not saying anything negative about the development of Harwich Port. It's just this was a real hot button and it's just one more go of it, I think is a good reason, my idea. Mary?
For me, it's more about making a change that's going to actually work.
Yeah.
And, and for me, it's asking the engineers whether, and remembering, there are only five of us here tonight.
Yeah.
So they need a unanimous vote for any, for any change to happen. And if we vote and, and somebody disagrees and I, I haven't decided which way I would go yet.
Then it's off the table.
It's off the table. So my only concern is that I would like to know from the engineers if the trips, if the trip generation for a takeout is more or less? And if it's more, if a short-term parking would involve some of that issue? So that you're forcing people to go in and go out, to, to do a justice to your business so that people aren't running around not being able to get a, a space to come in? Hopefully it is mostly, mostly foot traffic for you, but none of us knows that yet. And, you know, I know Mr. Miller has, you know, towing signs, sign notices at his other properties and I completely respect that because if you're not going into those businesses, you shouldn't park in their parking lot, you find space in the municipal lot. So, you know, I...
But just to be clear on that, not...
At least when I'm going to one of his businesses and otherwise I park in the municipal lot.
We, we, just to be clear though, I, I mean, there are signs posted on, on, to some degree. I have never towed, would never tow, and I would never allow my tenants to tow any person parking in my parking lot. I, I, you can sit in front of Three Monkeys and watch George's pizza boxes go by you all day long into my parking lot. And, you know, we just smile and that's part of being in a village, right? And as I said in my letter, sometimes when it comes to parking, I feel like I'm the only villager in the village because I'm providing parking and everyone else is using it and yet I'm the only one with an 800 square foot commercial space that I can't, can't be open past four o'clock. I don't know. I, I, I understand.
One, how about one more roll at this to go through all the details? Is that, are you open to that, Dennis, for January 26th? 7th, I did that again, I'm sorry, January 27th?
I, I mean, to me, it's up to the business. If they want to wait or if they want to go find another space in another town, they can go do it. So, and, and then there's even the, you know, to me, so that space can't be open past four o'clock for, if it was a bookstore, if it was a, you know, it's really not clear to me even what the restriction is, but other than it's there and I wouldn't do something without having it addressed. I mean, I wouldn't just do something, but, and, I don't know, if, if they're willing to wait, I'm willing to wait.
It's, it's a January, not a later...
Will the timing be a problem for you in, in securing supplies, I guess, and opening?
It's, it's, it's not ideal, but if that's kind of where we're at, then that's where we're at.
Well, the, the option, just to be clear, Mary is right, you'd need all five votes. So it's kind of like playing roulette a bit? So if you're...
I'm not opposed to a change, as long as the change is going to work. I also don't want to make a change that's going to be a problem and then you're going to be back here in...
Yeah.
In two months and, or in May or in June with another application fee and another...
Yeah.
Set of public hearings and another whole thing that's not necessary.
Right.
And that's just where I'm coming from.
I personally 100% agree with Dennis that it kind of, no matter what the business is that's going to be in there, you don't want it empty.
No, agreed.
It's kind of silly that there's only one little teeny unit.
It made, it made sense at the time. I think what we're offering in a continuance is to go over it one more time, get a view from the engineers one more time and revisit this decision to make it work. Is that correct, Mary?
I mean, that's where I was coming from and unless Christine thinks that it's not going to be an issue, I just, I'm just concerned on that.
And are you looking to open, are we looking to open by Memorial Day, Dennis?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Yeah.
Box in the parking for you?
Hi, Bob Nickerson, Harwich Port. First off, I'm not adverse to this at all. That's not the problem. The problem is I sat there with Mary all day, every one of those meetings, so exactly what went on. They gave Miller, which I also commend him for doing what he's doing, 14 spaces in the town parking lot. They give, you guys give everybody and their brother spaces in the parking lot that don't exist anymore. I wish you'd do an inventory to see how many you gave out because they're not there. So what I would do if I was Mr. Miller and I wanted them as my tenants, I would try to work out a space system that only works for them. Come and go. Somehow come up with a come and go. And that way they have people in. The reason they, we, they went and you gave them 14 spaces, it says 18 spaces here, but I remembered 14, is the fact that, remember, it was going to be a bigger restaurant and they didn't, and they have five units. So that's five dedicated spaces to the condos they get up there. So it was really going to be crowded and it still will be crowded. So if you really want these people to have that opportunity, force him to try to have some space there that they can sort of set up so people can come and go. Otherwise, it's going to be really hard for everybody because they're not going to come and go, they're just going to come.
Instinct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christine?
I, I just was going to opine that parking in a downtown area, parking issues, that's a good thing. It's a, it's a great sign of health, economic health in the business district. However, I do understand that this was a substantially large project and in deference to the planning board's decision, I'm happy to follow up with VHB to find out, just to do a little more digging relative to the conditions and the current implications. And hopefully we can come to a resolve by the end of January that we can hopefully lift the restriction from 4:00 PM. Because I do, I do think in order for economic activity to thrive in the, in Harwich Port Village, we, we want to support the business community as much as possible.
And I'm not, I'm not against making a change.
And this is not an implication that the board...
No.
We're doing that in any way.
I guess, I'm wondering if two dedicated spaces or four dedicated spaces that are 20 minutes or half an hour or something will, will give them enough turnover that, that you're going to have somebody available to come in and be quick and not, you know, not place a, you know, an Uber order or an Uber Eats order and then not have them be able to come and pick it up.
Right.
So I guess that, that's really where I'm coming from. I, I, I do agree. I like the, I like having the problem of parking and, and I think that's why we were also willing to go with the waiver because we wanted to see the, the lot developed and we wanted to see more businesses because it's, it's been nice to watch. I have been here from the very beginning and I remember when the movie theater was rained on you on a day like today when you were watching a movie. So I like the changes that have happened and I want to see them continue and thrive, so.
Any more public comment or comment?
I just have one question. I didn't announce myself. I'm Heather Skoronic, I'm resident of Harwich and owner of Murphy's General Store. I also remember the movie theater because I grew up here. But I, I guess my question, it was really just, you said January 27th?
7.
Is there a reason why the meeting couldn't happen earlier or is there another?
January 13th is full, correct?
Yes, and December 9th is also full.
So kind of to summarize, are we aiming at January 27th? We'll get some more answers to the questions. We'll look at different possible solutions. This won't impact the season, right? We're still in January?
We're...
Yes, Emily.
Can I, when we say full, like the 13th, is there any flexibility or is we, like, can we, can we, I mean, I'm open to staying. We're here late all the time. Like, is there a way to...
If we can get information from VHB and it's relatively straightforward and it's amenable to the board, we can always put it on and continue it to the 27th.
If we don't have...
Is that another option?
Do you want to move it earlier?
That would be a good compromise.
I'd rather do that.
All right, so we're, we're going to December 13th? January 13th?
January 13th.
January 13th. Nothing earlier.
December 9th, we have the...
Probably wouldn't be able to do December 9th anyway.
Correct.
That's too close.
So we are amending that to January 13th? So we need a, a motion to continue?
So we need to continue till January, the meeting of January 13th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. We should be able to make decisions. This is not life and death.
Harry, it was really complicated, Harry. So just, those of us that were here, we put a lot of time in it and we're trying to do it right. It looks simple, but it, I don't think it is. That's my last...
Well, you know, I think that the, the compromise that, that Mary suggested, restricting the time would be an easy way out of this.
One way, there may be others. We're trying to get to the best solution, not just a solution, if, if I can summarize everyone's point of view.
Everyone's point of view?
The, uh, point of views that have been expressed tonight, including yours, Harry.
If, and if I was them, I would go out and find another space in another town that is more willing to accommodate them so that they can make a living. I'd be, I'd be on, I'd be on the phone tomorrow.
But I gave them cookies tonight and we're, we're friends, Harry.
We're just going to bring cookies to Harwich Port.
Bring cookies to Harwich Port.
That's what we want to do.
Okay.
The cookie economy.
Okay, we've had, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a vote with one abstention. Is that correct?
Let's go, second.
Done? Thank you very much.
I thank you all for your time.
We'll see you on the 13th.
See you on the 13th.
Thank you. It might be a long night.
We'll be, we'll be ready.
Hopefully it'll be a quick night.
Pack cookies.
Hopefully we'll have a nice, simple answer and it'll be done.
Thank you. Appreciate it all.
Thank you. Okay. Any other business in front of the board?
No.
Motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.